Welcome, everyone, and Counselor Inkster to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, September 10th. The time is 3:00 PM. And I'd like to acknowledge that the District of Seashell is located on the traditional and unceded territory of the Seashell Nation. We respect the histories, language, and culture of the people of Seashell Nation, whose presence continues to enrich this community today. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for any declarations of conflict. Seeing none, I will ask for an adoption of the agenda. For a second, all in favor? So moved. No delegations or proclamations, but 5.1. We have Seashell Fire Chief Dwight Davison, Deputy Fire Chief Steve Actterberg to be before us today to give us some updates on the Fire Safety Act. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Certainly, that was that. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, why don't you gentlemen tell me what you were expecting to happen today?
Actually, we could reframe the question or rephrase the question. We were invited by you guys to come and speak.
Okay. There were, I assume this comes out of our recent budget discussions around changes, maybe, that were required by the fire department with regards to any changes in the Fire Safety Act, if I have that correct. So that's kind of what we were looking for feedback on.
Okay, certainly. Yeah. So, would you like a little bit of history of the Fire Safety Act and the Fire Services Act? So in 1996, a Fire Services Act was enacted, and during that act, the powers for inspection were handed to the fire chief, where he was a designated local assistant to the Fire Commissioner, LAFC, and they would go out and do the fire inspections in the communities that they served. And then last year, on August 1st of 2024, the new Fire Safety Act came out, and the way it was written basically put the onus back on municipalities and regional districts and took that bit of power for investigation, inspection, compliance, and reporting from essentially the fire chief. So, again, we're in a little bit of a special circumstance here because we're a fire protection district that aligns with the municipality, whereas a lot of fire departments are managed by the municipality. So it's, they would just hand that authority over to the fire chief and it would continue on status quo. So, we realized that there was an issue with that, that we needed some clarification on. We reached out to the Office of Fire Commissioner, had conversation with them, and then we've also reached out to the district to have some conversation to say, okay, it looks as if the authority to provide inspection, investigation, reporting, and compliance has, again, been put back on the district, and then they can give that authority back to the fire department to conduct those on behalf of the municipality. So I think what we brought forward to the district was essentially, I think you guys made a resolution that gave authority back to the fire department to conduct the inspections, investigations, compliance, and reporting on behalf of the municipality.
So it's sort of like passing the baton back and forth. But the responsibility for that work doesn't lay with us, it lays with you, with the fire department.
Exactly.
So we're approving the fact essentially that it, that it's something you guys look after.
That is correct. By passing that resolution, we are responsible for that.
Hmm.
If you guys chose not to, then it would fall under your responsibility, and you would have to provide that service.
Gotcha. All right. Questions? Counselor Shepherd.
Thanks. Thanks for coming to Committee of the Whole. I'm a first-time counselor, so I'll probably ask some dumb questions.
No dumb questions.
I think I'm starting to understand the role. Where does it, where does your role, though, intersect with sort of municipal council or staff or the region?
Yeah, that's a great question. Actually, it really doesn't intersect because we are a separate authority that, with a single mandate, to provide fire protection to the citizens of the Seashell Fire Protection Districts. We, again, we have a district boundary, which happens to be the same boundary that the District of Seashell now shares as of 1986, when you guys incorporated into the district. However, we do have a good working relationship with the District of Seashell. We work with the building and planning divisions to ensure that, you know, buildings that are being built in our community meet fire and life safety standards, as well as any subdivisions that are being built meet the requirements for fire and life safety. So that's kind of where we cross over, or actually, we don't cross over, but that's where we work together to ensure the safety of our community through proper building code enforcement, proper fire and life safety enforcement.
Sorry, just a follow-up, if I could, Madam Chair. Does the fire department supply data on, like, inspections or any kind of data on what the department does to the municipality or to the region?
Well, we hadn't in the past because, again, we weren't doing it on your behalf. We were doing it on the behalf of the Fire Protection District because we have the authority to do that. We do provide an annual report where it's reported how many inspections are done throughout the year, compliance rates, inspection rates. Again, at any time, those are documents that can be opened and looked at, and this might be a good opportunity to make a connection that perhaps Mayor and Council and the fire and myself meet, you know, once or twice a year to discuss any ongoing issues, or if there's issues that Mayor and Council have or the district has, and certainly any issues that the fire department has that you guys would be responsible for.
Sorry, one last question, if I could. You know, one area where it does intersect is the budget. We sort of see on our tax rolls what the requisition is for the following year, but I don't think we see any, we never see it beforehand. So could you describe the, your budget process, the sort of timing, when you determine what your budget is? Thanks.
That's a great question because we're right in the middle of our budget process right now. So, as a fire protection district, we have the ability to tax the citizens of the fire protection district, in which case the province is the one that does the taxation, it comes through the municipality because you guys collect tax. So only the fire protection district, improvement districts that look after fire protection and improvement districts that look after street lighting in British Columbia have the ability to tax that way. If we were a water protection district, we would issue our own tax assessments to all of the properties involved. So it's done through the province. What we do is I work with the Board of Trustees. We look at our operating budget from year to year. We follow our strategic plan that's been laid out, as well as a 10-year plan to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our community. We do a needs assessment based on our call volume, our volunteer numbers, whether the rate of retention, the rate of recruitment, any services that we provide, and increases or decreases in those services. And that's how we come up with our operating budget. Again, it's, I presented a draft form to the Board, Board of Trustees, and then they discuss it, they look at it, and then they decide if it's going to pass or if it's handed back for revision, and then we work in conjunction. And then, once that's done, excuse me, we submit the proposal to Victoria. That submittal happens on or before October 31st of the year previous. And so then we take, we get a requisition payout, payment, the first working day after January 1st for half of the year's budget, and then the first working day after July of that year for the second half of the budget.
Counselor Inksters and then Counselor McLaughlin.
Sorry.
You have to go?
No.
Okay. Madam Chair, just a, now that we have Chief Davison in front of us, finally, in his new role, is it okay to have a little bit of latitude? I'm, I was happy with them coming to explain to us that other thing, but I was comfortable with it, but I was glad to have the opportunity to have you in front of me to ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Just, just back to your, the other role of, other than this legislative piece, I guess we'll call it, just a couple of questions about fires, just to get, because I would love to see, to talk to you guys maybe once a year, and I think it's been a while since you talked to the fire department, it's good to, you know, because we're partners, right?
Oh, exactly.
And so I was going to ask you, have you seen an increase over the last number of years in structure versus vegetation fires? And I'm saying vegetation because of what we witnessed last summer, you can't really call it a forest fire, so that's why I'm calling it vegetation. And just to answer that question, and I have another one, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Yeah, certainly, there has been an increase in vegetated fires, as well as an overall increase over the five-year average in structure fires as well. You can see through the annual report that we also now have a category that covers off tent, small structure, and shelter fires, which, again, 10 years ago, that wasn't even an item. So you'll see a large increase there in that regard, so.
Huge increases, thanks. That's kind of the additional information I was looking for. Thanks, Chief Davison. The other question is, still staying with one hall?
Yeah, at this point in time, we are. Again, geographically for our region, it is strategically placed there. We, as you guys are aware of, the geographical challenges in our area, we actually, our community spreads out in kind of four directions. We go from the downtown core out to Summer Park, Wilson Creek, from the downtown core out towards Sandy Hook, Tuaneck, the downtown core out towards West Porpoise Bay, and then the downtown core to West Seashell towards Half Moon Bay. So strategically located in the middle of Seashell is.
Sort of right in the middle of the spider or octopus, right?
Exactly. We have the ability to travel fairly unimpeded through, in those four directions.
Oh, great.
And again, being in the downtown core, the downtown core makes up, it's about 49% of our call volume manually.
Good information as well.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great, thank you, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes, thank you to the Chair. I was interested in sort of something similar to what Counselor Inkster asked, is if you have a 10-year plan, I was wondering if you take into account demographics that we have, and, you know, how many fire halls we should have. We have some, you know, neighborhoods that could grow a lot, some that have grown a lot, and just with the issue of fire being more prevalent and a concern moving forward with climate change, just wondering if there's a role for us to play in finding sites for that, capital planning for fire halls, sometimes joint use, co-location projects are possible with fire halls. So to me, from a municipal point of view, it offers quite a few opportunities, perhaps, to start thinking that way. And then I was also curious about the other fire districts around us, like, how do you coordinate with them so that, you know, you essentially can act like one organization?
Yeah, Counselor McLaughlin, that's a great, two great questions there. Number one, in the past, we have worked with the district to look at securing lands in and around the Wilson Creek area when the, there was a large development that had been planned to go in there. We had looked at securing some lands for a satellite hall. We also looked at securing, currently have land in West Seashell at our training facility. We have four and a half acres up there, so we do have the ability to look at that as a place for a satellite hall. Unfortunately, the issue that you run into when you have satellite halls is the, having people to put in them. So if I have a satellite hall in Wilson Creek, but I only have one volunteer that lives in the area, then that satellite hall is sitting there empty, and it's costing taxpayers money just to sit there, and there wouldn't be a response out of it. Our volunteers aren't driving from West Seashell to Wilson Creek to man an apparatus there. And even the same with, sorry, West Seashell, even though that a bulk of our membership lives in West Seashell, it's kind of more of the residential, higher density residential areas in our community, to look at putting a satellite hall at our training facility, again, now we're taking the available manpower, firefighters, volunteer firefighters that we have, and we're splitting them up to respond to two different halls, to bring two different apparatus. So again, we would be, again, needing to increase budgets to build a building, to have apparatus there, and it, you know, the times we've looked at it, it's not, it's not the greatest strategic move operationally, and it definitely increases financial demands on the fire department to do that. So I hope that kind of answered that question, and then in regard, sorry, the second part of your question.
That's just coordinating, coordinating with the.
Coordinating with the other departments, yes. So we have mutual aid agreements and automatic aid agreements with all of the Sunshine Coast Regional District Fire Departments, as well as the Pender Harbor Fire Improvement District. So our mutual aid agreement allows us at any time during the day or night that we need assistance from any fire department on the coast. We can call them directly and they will respond, just as they have that agreement with us. Quite often, again, because we are, we are a busier department, and we're finding that we're running multiple calls at a time, we've had to, just this year, request Roberts Creek and Half Moon Bay to respond to calls within our jurisdiction to cover because our crews have been busy at a previous event. Gibson's also has a ladder truck, look around our community, we have multi-story buildings, so we also have a tower truck. But again, if we hit a fire in one of the, one of the multi-story buildings, we're going to need the assistance from Gibson's ladder truck, and that falls into the mutual aid agreement, where we can directly request the ladder truck from Gibson's to respond if needed. And again, historically, other departments have called on Seashell to go and assist them with a technical rescue type calls or structure fires or MVAs, anytime that those departments feel that they're going to be, they're not going to have enough resources to respond. In addition to the mutual aid agreement, we also have an automatic aid agreement. Our automatic aid agreement is with Half Moon Bay from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So if they have a structure fire or a multi-vehicle MVA with multiple patients, we automatically respond to that. And again, those, automatic aid agreements are written because a lot of the volunteers that live in Half Moon Bay don't work in Half Moon Bay, so they have a hard time getting volunteers to the hall in the middle of the day, and we have the ability to respond out, to assist them. And again, that automatic aid was also intended to have Roberts Creek included in that. When the regional district wrote these out, they elected to have Gibson's and Roberts Creek kind of pair up, and then we paired up with Half Moon Bay. So Roberts Creek utilizes the mutual aid agreement because that's a 24-hour agreement during the middle of the day, because we have the ability to respond to parts of Roberts Creek more efficiently than Gibson's Fire Department does. But again, there's a, there's a large portion of Roberts Creek that they can respond to efficiently to provide that automatic aid agreement.
Great.
I just had a question about our geography. Oftentimes, like, along the highway, we have people on the high side, we have people on the low side, and I, how do you manage that? Because obviously, some of these crazy driveways, there's no way you're taking a fire truck down there. So I guess, is it all covered one way or the other, or are there things we need to improve perhaps?
No, we, so we provide fire protection for the entire Seashell Fire Protection District, which is the boundaries of the District of Seashell. So all properties are protected there. We have response plans for Sandy Hook and Tuaneck, which are, if you want to talk climate change, would be more of our Wui, which wildland, urban interface type fires. So those two communities are concerned to us, so we already have response plans in place. Some of the biggest issues with those two areas is, again, travel time, topography, vegetation that's out there, and the one road in, one road out. So again, we've taken that into account in our, in our response plans.
Well, just thank you very much for coming. I mean, we love the RCMP, but I think these days, you guys are our heroes, so, and I really see, I think, a larger role in the future and more emphasis on it, perhaps more permanent firefighters might be in the works, a lot more. So we'll see how it goes, but I would want to be prepared and plan for that.
Yep, and again, we thank you for the opportunity to finally get out and have an opportunity to speak with you. It's been a busy start, or busy last year, my first year in the role, and then continuing on through this year, so thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Counselor Shepherd?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, we'll budget. I think the budget for 2025 was, was it 1.8 million?
The budget for 2025?
Yeah.
No. The budget for, budget numbers for 2025 for the fire department was 3.5 million.
3.5 million, sorry, maybe I'm thinking of just the district portion, but, so that's a significant increase from the previous year.
That is correct, yes.
And is that a result of the fire department moving to more paid employees, or is it equipment, or?
So, great question, that is a combination of both. So in 2025, after a needs assessment of 2023, we realized that, actually, it was brought to management by our volunteers that, they were starting to experience burnout. They, we've experienced in the last five years, 104% increase in our call volume. You know, a volunteer can only leave their job during the day, so, so many times before, you know, the bosses, I can't know, or, you know, a lot of self-employed volunteer firefighters, where they're now losing money. So we did a needs assessment, and at that current structure, we couldn't keep up, and we were going to experience no response calls, where the fire department wouldn't be able to mount a response. So the Board of Trustees and myself sat down, discussed as many options as we, we looked at several different options. We did in 2024, again, we kind of made it a two-year plan. So in 2024, we restructured the current employees and put basically the current employees on a, on a work schedule that provided as much coverage as we could throughout the 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, because we had already established 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM duty crews, where we have volunteers on standby to be able to provide a response. So year, year one of that two-year plan was realign current staffs, work to try to fill as much of the 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, so they ended up working longer days to offset that. And then in 2025, we, we had to hire five firefighters, and we basically reassigned one of our staff into that group, so we had six firefighters. So now, we are covered with three firefighters from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and then we have our standby crew from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
Sorry, just a follow-up about that. So, so has that full increase in sort of paid staff hit the budget, or do you anticipate more increases for next year?
There will be no more staff increases for next year. Another big piece of last year's budget is we had to replace a fire apparatus. So again, it was time to replace our wildland truck that would respond out to Sandy Hook, Tuaneck, and any wildfires in and around in the district, as well as we have agreements with BC Wildfire to respond outside of our district as initial attack teams, and that apparatus was a half a million dollars, so, yeah. But again, through planning, it just so happened that the replacement time unfortunately coincided with needing to, needing to up our staff.
Hey, Counselor Toss.
Thank you. This is a question that came to me through somebody a couple days ago, and improvement districts haven't historically been able to get grant funding from the province because there's been sort of a push to try and do away with improvement districts provincially. I'm just wondering, there, there was some murmuring about changes to that so that they could apply for grants, and I'm just wondering if you guys know if the improvement districts are available for grant funding?
Yes, so, smaller scale grants, yes, we are. There, they have opened up the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund granting to improvement districts. They've also opened it up to nation fire departments, where historically, it was only for municipal and regional district fire departments. So we have been successful in those grant applications the past two years, when it opened to improvement districts. It just opened again for 2026, so we'll be making a grant application for that as well. However, those grants are, you know, in the whole scheme of things, fairly small, and they, they're quite specific in what they can, what we can apply them to. However, every time we're successful, we are able to use that money to offset, you know, any increases in tax to cover those costs. So as far as for infrastructure pieces, at this point in time, no, but I, but I do believe they are looking at it opening that up, and again, that would be great if the, if the province did do that, because, you know, applying for grants through that, again, lessens the burden of our taxpayers.
Okay, I'm going to wrap this up by, first of all, a shout-out to Assistant Chief Actterberg for his youth fire department project that is, I think it's great, and it seems like it's super successful every, I think you run it at spring break, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, that's correct, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
With such a small population, we struggle with finding volunteer firefighters, keeping them. Anybody moving to the Sunshine Coast and able to afford our climate isn't really jumping at the bit to volunteer at a fire hall. So trying to find some homegrown kids that grew up in this community, that have strong ties to this community, and have families in this community, was a really good opportunity for us that we couldn't pass up, and honestly, I just love it.
And it looks awesome. So that leads me into, are you always recruiting, or are you doing drives? Like, could somebody walk in and say, "I want to volunteer" at any time?
100%.
Okay, and what is an employer's obligation to, you know, I work for Joe down at, you know, South Coast Ford or something, what does the employee err, do they have to agree to so many hours that they'd let them go?
No, so we don't have set agreements like that because we're not trying to put a burden on to businesses, business owners, and even, again, self-employed people. So the, the volunteer structure side of it is we, we meet, or we meet and train on Wednesday nights, so again, it's in the evenings. The time commitment that we really hope to get back from our volunteers is through the evening, through the evening hours, from that 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. We tried to lessen the burden by having paid crews where our volunteers don't need to leave work, because they, they came to us in 2023 and said, "We can't do this anymore." So there, there is no obligation by a business owner or a volunteer that they have to meet X amount of hours in the course of a year, leaving their job. Their job pays the bills, provides for their family, that's the last thing we want, is for somebody to take on financial hardship because they're volunteering their time to the community.
Okay, great, for all of our viewers out there.
Yes, we are always recruiting. You can stop by the fire hall anytime, I actually have a couple of applications here if anybody's interested.
Thank you very much for coming today and answering all of our questions. I think you're free, you're free unless you want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to 5.2, the community land development analysis, Mr. Pearson, or, yeah? Okay.
It's great to be here again in front of you, to bring you up to date on the community land.
to date on the community land development analysis, otherwise known as the CLDA. Now that, uh, project is attached to the, to the staff report as attachment one. And just as an introduction, uh, work on the CLDA started at the beginning of this year and the document was completed by our project consultant Dialogue Design in July. Uh, prior to the document being sent to the Union of British Columbia Municipalities, UBCM. It underwent a technical review by our project partners consisting of staff from the SCRD and Sheshel Nation and, uh, the Sunshine Coast Affordable Housing Society. We believe as staff that the CLDA has reached an implementation stage, uh, where we can lead it into useful policy options and considerations and content for the new OCP. As, as has been mentioned in previous presentations of the CLDA to you, uh, this project is part and parcel with the OCP review. I just want to briefly go over the document itself. Uh, there's five sections to it. Um, there's about 100 pages and then appendices A and B, which are about 20 pages. There's four broad topics under review and under analysis in this report, housing, transportation, infrastructure, and, and daily needs. Those four are called the four lenses of the project, and we had to follow along the, um, provincial and UBCM's guidelines, um, by analyzing these four components. So starting with, uh, section one, uh, sets out the local context considered in the analysis. It includes updated demographics, policy and legislative considerations, and defines the study area. Uh, the study area is geographically the District of Seashelt Municipal Boundary with our important linkages to the, uh, regional district electoral areas and the nation. Uh, this section refers to related planning efforts recently achieved and underway. Uh, for example, the small-scale multi-unit housing zoning bylaw amendments that council adopted, uh, last year, along with, um, the housing needs report, uh, the, the recent one, uh, received one year ago, and, uh, the residential density updates of the official community plan, uh, which were adopted last December, each of those required by the province, and each of those are interrelated with the CLDA. Section two of the CLDA describes the provincial definition of a complete community. So if you're interested in knowing more about like how, how Seashelt may, uh, fit into the definition of a complete community, then page 20 of the document is a good place to go for that. Uh, following that, there are the main steps we took to prepare the CLDA and what we need to consider in keeping the project flowing into the new OCPA, OCP. Section three gets into the planning process undertaken, in particular, the public engagement. The results of that are summarized in appendix A and B, and one can get a good idea of some of the important community values and desires that were expressed at those public open houses and definitely relevant to the OCP. Uh, some of those main themes include accessibility and connectivity, uh, increased recreation opportunities for all ages, indoor and outdoor, more of a diversity of housing, uh, beyond large lot, single-family housing, and closer proximity to amenities, uh, daily needs. For example, neighborhood commercial notes, more opportunities for mixed-use developments. Uh, section four, the themes presented at the engagement session mirror the lenses of, of housing, transportation, infrastructure, and daily needs, and each of the categories are analyzed in detail in section four. The housing component contains the most up-to-date information available, and that's because we have the, uh, the new housing needs report. Uh, we also had materials provided by Cover the Coast, which are up to date, and a more detailed market analysis, uh, beyond those previous documents was included in the CLDA contract with Dialogue. And all of that information was too large to include in the CLDA, but we do have it available, and it's nicely summarized in section four as well. Uh, the project team, uh, on our own initiative, we decided to add the category of special places, which yielded some interesting results and are mapped out over the project areas. There's lots of different maps in section four, and some of them are, are fairly interesting and neat to look at. There's, um, intersection density maps. There's, uh, heat, heat maps which show, uh, density of various things. Uh, the daily needs category is an interesting one. It covers 14 different types of amenities, um, anywhere from retail outlets to daycares to parks and beaches. It's a very broad topic, daily needs, but they can be categorized into our new OCP as well. Um, section five is really a summary of the CLDA findings, and much of that will be relevant for the OCP, the new one. And, uh, page two of the staff report, um, has a very simple matrix showing how the four lenses can tie into the new OCP. So, uh, with that being said, uh, the recommendations on page one of the staff report are one, uh, that council, uh, respectfully, uh, support this CLDA, um, by endorsing it. And the SCRD, uh, made a specific ask that, um, it be referred to their board. So that's, uh, part of the recommendation too, and also Sheshel. Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Inkster.
Just asking staff if they were wanting us to, if they respectfully were asking us to adopt it, or if you wanted us to respectfully adopt it. Uh, it's just a, just a joke based on you. Yeah. I, I thought I got you there, so I'm just, it's just a joke. Yeah.
It's probably a double negative, so positive.
No question? That was it?
That, while there's going to be more, but.
Okay. Counselor Shepherd?
I'll move the recommendations on page two.
Uh, I see a seconder. Uh, any questions? Or Mayor Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm curious if this, uh, study, what is the impact of age on, uh, a study like this, given we're one of the oldest communities in the province? How does that skew or do you anticipate in doing a study like this? Does it contemplate we're going to rebalance somehow?
Your worship, uh, sorry, Madam Chair, that's, that's an interesting question. Uh, the study does look at the demographics of Seashelt in a fair amount of detail. And, and yes, uh, the majority of the population is over 50 for sure and probably over 65 as well. Uh, there is, uh, note, notes to, um, more younger families moving in in recent times and, uh, potential for entrepreneurial, um, ventures starting up with that. And also there was, um, a call, if you will, by the citizens that attended the open house sessions for more recreation opportunities, uh, not only for seniors but also for youth as well. But will the CLDA balance out the demographics? Hmm, I don't think so.
Uh, just, yeah. Um, thank you. No, I, I didn't expect that, that CLDA would, would rebalance, but I guess I was curious if within the industry of, of planning, how do you make assumptions about whether a community is going to age or not age? Because obviously it changes what we need. We need, uh, in my opinion, we need a lot more seniors housing, for example, because we are an older community. Um, but do we anticipate it that way? Or do you, part of this is economic development, and I saw your, uh, references to the econ, uh, to the entrepreneurs and the younger families. Again, I support, but this is a planning process. So I'm curious, how do we, what are the underlying assumptions? Are we going to stay the same? Are we going to get younger? Otherwise, we're definitely getting older.
Thanks, Your Worship, Madam Chair. I'll have to, uh, put some thought to that one.
Counselor Inkster?
Now, thank you. This is, uh, quite a substantive document that you put a, a lot of work into. And, uh, there are some, many of us that have sat at this table for a long time know the planning issues associated with the growth of our district. Uh, the one issue that, uh, we need to turn our heads to, and there's some mention of it, is climate change in the document. Um, so, uh, could you speak to that at all and, and pieces of that? And as you speak to it, um, I would just suggest to council that I would prefer that we accept this document, not endorse necessarily at this point. Um, this is a big document, and not that we wouldn't endorse it, um, but I would just like to accept the document as a document presented to us at this point, based on the number of ideas presented therein, including climate change discussion. Thanks.
Sure. Madam Chair, the, through you, the, uh, topic of climate change did come up, uh, among the staff of, of the district here, also the SCRD and Sheshel. It's, it's a broad topic. Uh, when looking at the four lenses, right, housing, transportation, et cetera, uh, all four of them are interrelated to climate change in some form or another, daily needs. We all, we all need, um, a safe, um, land base to develop and live on, that it's not going to be flooded, and we need to plan for that. Um, but specifically, are, is there ideas for infrastructure to be built, uh, to protect us from rising sea levels? No, there isn't, not in this document.
Thank you. Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you. So, yeah, uh, I was concerned too that there isn't much on climate change in terms of analyzing, uh, land that's at risk and what the development approach should be. I mean, I think there are areas where we probably would want to retreat, and we need to analyze, uh, you know, over the next 10, 20 years. Uh, we need to analyze, uh, where those, where those are and where we need, uh, future facilities and, and density, especially as the mayor said, in terms of for seniors. Um, there's some other, uh, things we can look at. I'm sure the planners will for best practices when they're moving this into the OCP, is things like happy cities. And the, I was just noticing in my email, they have something for building, uh, and designing for dementia. So it's ways you can, um, organize your, your locations and your buildings and your entire district to start, um, you know, uh, these are new things that are being explored, but I think that it's really critical for this community to stand out in terms of taking the lead and things like that. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLaughlin. I wholeheartedly agree with you, and it falls under a, a lot of the topics brought up in terms of accessibility and connectivity.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the table, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion was, uh, to move recommendations one to, which is, um, endorsement. So I'm going to, if there's no further questions, I will, yeah, Counselor Inkster?
Yeah, sorry, Madam Chair, um, just semantics perhaps, but I prefer to accept and endorse. Thanks. It's a big document. We've spent our time on large documents like this in the past, so thanks.
Counselor Shepherd?
Madam Chair, sorry to quibble, but, you know, the, this document is, is foundational for the OCP update. So whether we accept or endorse, you're effectively endorsing, uh, unless, because it is, uh, what the OCP is going to be built on, I, I really don't see the difference at this point. Thanks.
Okay, well, the motion on the table is to endorse, so let's call the vote on that and, um, see where we land. All those in favor? Opposed? So noted. All right, thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you.
All right, 5.3, uh, the CUF governance audit. And Ms. Roberts, I assume?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I've provided a supplementary document, uh, beyond what's in the council agenda, and this was just to streamline the recommendations that we brought forward in the July meeting regarding the CUF report. Uh, so they, the supplementary document can be found on the website, and it is only the actions that we're looking for from council. So anything that was recommended that has not been completed, uh, you'll find in that document. You'll notice a few recommendations are italicized and they're in blue writing. These remain on hold, and I just wanted to provide a little bit of context with the intention of supporting good governance and the preservation of the staff at the district. First off, staff has the utmost respect for all of you, with council and mayor, and I believe the mayor is attempting to enact the recommendations that speak to his interactions with the CAO, uh, and that kind of comes right after the letter that, that we saw in the paper. The letter that was sent to the coast reporter expressed the mayor's apology for his part in the dysfunction that exists amongst the leadership of the district, and also stating his efforts had not been well received, some of them. Although, um, there was the apology, we had the expectation that the apology would be followed with action that would be accountable to change and collaboration. Unfortunately, since the letter, the behavior that the CUF report described as humiliating, intimidating, and demeaning continues towards CAO, and at this time, staff cannot recommend further meetings between the mayor and CAO. As council may recall, before the CUF report, we did have council collaboration sessions, and we were trying to make an effort, uh, of collaborating between staff, uh, mayor and council. I wish this could be the fix, um, and that we could move forward. With that said, we ask that the highlighted recommendations from the CUF report remain on hold until we have support and guidance from municipal advisor that , uh, council has recommended. We will, of course, support the will of council on what you'd like to do with these recommendations. Thank you.
Counselor Shepherd?
So, Madam Chair, just in terms of process, are we going to march through these, uh, recommendations based on the document that, um, Director Roberts has just sent out?
That's the will of council? Is that what we would like to do? All right. Then, um, we will march through and, um, allow discussion and, uh, vote it on each one, perhaps? Okay. So, um, looking at, number two. Just so I'm clear, Director Roberts, the bold title and then, um, everything below it obviously refers to the title, like number two. And then between number two and number three is related to number two.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so it follows the CUF report recommendation. So the bolded title will match the one in the CUF report, and then what is left over and has not been completed is listed. So it moves to three. The, yeah, the numbering won't make a lot of sense if you weren't also looking at the report.
Okay. So why don't I read out the action, and, um, we can have discussion after that? Or, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just for anybody who's trying to follow along with both documents, we're looking at, um, this is a synthesis of what starts on page 334.
Okay.
Of our draft package. So you can actually see the full list of recommendations, starting on 334.
Be easier for me to look at that. Okay, the action was council to review the council communication principles, appendix C, and decide whether you would like to endorse, put on hold, or disregard. And the recommendation is this implementation. Um, mayor/CAO covenant is on hold. Any discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Shepherd.
Uh, I mean, I'm in favor of it, uh, just because we're setting out how, how the, the groups are to communicate with each other. So I, I don't see any kind of problem unless I'm missing something.
Any other comments? Oh, um, Director Roberts?
Thank you, Chair. If I can just, um, elaborate. So I only put action items on the non-italicized blue items. So, um, as much as. So as much as I am looking for direction on what you'd like to do with those items that are on hold, the action that you spoke to was regarding D, which is for council to review and consider the council communication principles.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, which is what I read out. So the action was council to review the council communication principles, appendix C, and decide whether we would like to endorse, put on hold, or disregard. Counselor Shepherd.
I'm just trying to follow that's in the document. So what we're talking about now is D. The mayor was asked to deliver a statement regarding its acceptance of the need for changes. Is that... Okay. Yeah, again, I go back to my earlier comment. I don't find anything problematic with the communication policy set out.
Okay, so we're talking about D, so we're all clear, right? Any other comments? So do we want a motion then? Carrie Anne, do we want a motion for each of these? Is that what we're looking for?
Similar to any resolutions, if council wanted to batch some, they could certainly do that as long as it's clearly identified which portions are being included on the vote. I'm following along on the supplementary handout myself here, so I can just insert notations as needed.
Okay, so to be clear, Counselor Shepherd, is your motion for the D action item to be put on hold? Or disregard?
No, to proceed with it.
To proceed with it? Endorse. Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion from Counselor Shepherd to endorse action item falling under D. Do I have a second or... All right, any more comments? All in favor? And opposed? All right, that's moved. So under the heading... Sorry, Ms. Roberts, I'm having trouble following along. So am I looking at 3A?
That's correct. Thank you for the question, Chair. And you don't have to speak to all of these. I just wanted to highlight the items that were still to be discussed. So yes, this is the mayor, and the action is to discuss the apology and whether it was satisfactory to council, as when we were here in July, that was not completed.
Okay, Counselor Shepherd.
You know, the mayor's apologized in public in a statement to the newspaper, and I don't want to unnecessarily draw this out. The only sort of final piece to it that I certainly would have liked is what is going to change in the next year? It's great to have the apology. I really appreciate it. I think it's moving things forward. But what behaviors are going to change so that we don't have conflict? Thanks. So, sorry, I'll just finish off that piece. So I don't think we can endorse this yet until we see that final piece. Thanks.
I think... Sorry?
That would be a motion to defer that item, then.
Yeah. I wonder if it's easier if we bring forward the ones we wish to endorse and defer the rest, and the corporate officers nodding their head. Okay, does council see any further action items they'd like to endorse? Counselor Shepherd.
Moving to the next page of Director Roberts' document. I mean, I would move to endorse G. Council is asked to agree to the council administration protocol in principle. This is not being completed.
So are you moving that council to decide...
I believe there's a council administration protocol document attached to the Cuff Report, and I'm in favor of it.
To proceed with that?
Correct.
So to be clear, we are talking about 4G. Do I have a second or for that? And all in favor of that one? And opposed? I think I would say for number 6A, I would like to propose that we get an update from staff around posting our code of conduct in the chambers. And do I have a second for that? And all in favor? All right, thank you.
Oh, if I could add another to the list, H. Council was asked to approve the role statement for a councillor serving on one or more district ABCs. The corporate officer was asked to review each ABC of the council, prepare a committee charter for each for circulation to council. And I'm in favor of it just because for the various committees, it's just really a restatement of what our role is, what the mandate of the council is. So it's, in my mind, unless I'm wrong, it's a quick sort of summary of what our role is on the committees.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes, through the chair. I think a charter would have more than just our role. It would have other people on that committee and their roles, and the meeting dates, and probably the times, and maybe some of the objectives and focus. And I think it would probably be a good thing so that people who may want to run for council will know what that is, and it'll hold us more accountable for just managing them a little more formally, I think.
Yeah, I agree with everything Counselor McLaughlin's mentioned. I think the format is laid out by Mr. Cuff, so he's advising us to follow along with that format.
Okay, can you reference that number again, Counselor Shepherd?
I've just... On my copy, I've just got under H.
Oh, H. I thought yours said eight. Sorry. I need hearing is... Okay, so are you seconding his motion? That sounds like a second. So, okay, so all in favor? Opposed? Counselor Shepherd, sorry.
Sorry, I would jump to 6D. Council is asked to engage with a code advisor or legal council to review and incorporate clear sanctions for any violations. This is not being completed. I know we've updated our code of conduct, but I know that we haven't added any clear sanctions. And, I mean, I ask for everyone's advice. Was our legal advice not to, in order to bring it up to what other municipalities are doing, I thought we had a legal recommendation to add sanctions? Or a list of sanctions.
Have a comment on that?
I do. Thank you, Chair. Yes, we can bring this back anytime, and it was legal council's recommendation to look at this again once they had received the Cuff Report. So we had done a review of the code of conduct right before the Cuff Report, and then once we had these recommendations, our legal council said they would be happy to review it again and consider sanctions. Thank you.
Then I'm making a motion that council move ahead with 6D.
6D. All right, I'll second... Counselor Toth, yeah, I seconded. It's on the table, yep.
Yes, through the chair, I'm just wondering. Recall hearing something that Municipal Affairs was looking to administrate a process. I don't know if any of you have heard that. To have somebody appointed with the province to take on the role of managing these issues. I mean, I'm pretty sure some of our favorite people that we've had involved will be heading that up one way or the other. So I wonder if we should just wait till maybe we hear some more at UBCM about that? Or just... Yeah, I'm just trying to not get the cart before the horse, if there's a big horse. Thanks.
I know, hang on. I know the province, there is a big project sort of around this. Do you want to comment on that, Ms. Roberts?
Sure, thank you, Chair. They have told us that in the spring session, there will be something coming. They're not entirely sure what that will look like, but they're reviewing the code of conduct and considering things like the standardization. So although we're hopeful, we're not entirely sure what that will look like. I know there is a meeting scheduled at UBCM, so I'm hopeful we'll have more information there. Yeah.
Counselor Inster.
Yeah, thank you. My question was, what would we... Just what would we hear at UBCM? And if that was a government report to us and presentation, I looked as closely at the agenda as others may have. And so would that report include the process that is mentioned, but also sanctions? I'm not sure what that legislative report will contain and/or the legal act or law that's created. So I'm wondering if sanctions were included within that. Thanks. We know. I mean, it doesn't sound like we know a lot.
We don't. I mean, my personal opinion is we don't know a lot, and the speed of light that government works at. I mean, they've been talking about this for a long time. I think it's getting more traction than it's had personally. I would rather see us... I'm going to be in favor of proceeding on this, but Counselor Toth?
Thank you, Chair. I guess my only comment is that with what Counselor McLaughlin said, you know, if UBCM or if something comes out at UBCM that renders this redundant, we can always sort of walk back on it. I don't think this is anything that we're going to get done in the next two weeks anyways. So from a timeline perspective, I'd rather, you know, put down that we endorse this work. And if it's rendered redundant by our parents at the province, then so be it. Thanks.
All right, I'm going to call the question on this reminder is 60. No. Looking at the wrong page. Yep, 60. All in favor? And opposed? So noted. Counselor Shepherd.
I'm really jumping around the document. I apologize for that. But reviewing all of the recommendations, you know, the one that stands out for me is number nine, proceeding with the CAO performance, which is... It's just kind of shocking that it hasn't been done. So to me, that's the top priority of this whole thing, that we move ahead with the performance review process. So that's 9A.
Is there a second or for that? Yes, you're a second or? Counselor Inster, okay, discussion?
Counselor McLaughlin, sorry. Just to give some rationale, I think because we haven't really resolved the issues, I think it's rather unfair to say we're going to, you know, do a review of the CAO. I felt that way for two years now, so I can't really support this. So thank you.
My worry is it's not... It's not really a fair representation of the last few years. Yes, this... Anyone? Yeah, Counselor Inster.
Yeah. I'm not sure if the... I have to be clear on the message being sent in doing and seconding that and looking to do that is one that we haven't done one. And I'm not sure if we'll do one this term. That's a really unfortunate part. We used to do one every year to 18 months based on the busyness of council. And it was one that was included in, I think the Cuff Report is something we should be doing. We could create a report and/or structure that reporting process in such a way that it's done representatively and fairly. But at the same time, review the role in order to do what has happened in the past, just to check up with our CEO as well. But I understand that it's in the midst of what would be considered quagmire of other issues, but that would be the reason why I would look to do it otherwise. There'll be no review most likely on file for '22 to '26. Thanks.
Counselor Shepherd.
Yeah, it's no secret that there is, you know, a deep divide here with the CEO over certain issues that we can't discuss. However, it shouldn't, you know, without doing a review, you're lighting that one issue cloud over everything. So, and I think there's a lot of other things that the rest of this council can put down on paper in terms of review. I just think it should be done. Thanks.
Counselor Toth.
Thank you, Chair. I've been struggling with it. I can see both sides of either doing it or not doing it. I think we have to be... If we're going to do a performance review, we have to navigate it extremely delicately with all of the issues and things that have been going on. And if there is any hint or thought that we couldn't navigate the process, I'd rather put it on hold. I doubt we would be the first council to not do a performance review of the CAO, and I doubt we would, you know, be the last within the term. So if there's a way that we can structure it and manage it, I would be okay with it. Otherwise, I would rather just put it on hold. Thanks.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes, if I could just, through the chair, add some comments. I mean, to me, I think the whole Cuff Report is kind of a review. Not like we haven't been on top of everything. the whole CUF report is kind of a review, not like we haven't been on top of everything. Maybe what we could do instead is have a, a overall review of our senior management team and the CAO, because they've been filling in a lot for them. And we do want to have comments on general administration, senior administration. I mean, normally, he would have maybe something to bring to us, but I don't really feel he, he does. So maybe that's a way around it, just so that we feel we're doing our due diligence, but we're not, you know, we're not out to really critique somebody as toughly as you normally would, I think, for somebody at that level of administration. Thanks.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. This is a difficult subject because of the message we would unintendedly be sending. I would love to get the, get rid of the word "performance" at this point. And I just think that's the wording that we need to throw out. And maybe put in something like "council management professional development discussion," or something like that.
I guess my concern is this, you know, it's, it's on your record. It's part of your professional life, right? And I'm sensitive to that fact. Maybe a little more than I was last month, because I certainly had my own complaint filed with my employer from outside of the organization. You know, and that, that sticks with you, and that's, that's not necessarily fair. So I think what I'd look for, I don't think I, at this time, can support a full-on performance evaluation, but I would be interested to hear from staff on what format we could possibly use that would be as fair a representation document as we could do. We already have one on the table. So anyways, if there's no further discussion, I will call the question. And the question is to support nine, the Act under ninety, endorse a CAO performance review. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I will make a recommendation to ask staff to bring back perhaps suggestions of how we can do a review of the CAO and/or, well, senior management isn't our employee, though. I, I'm going to leave them out of that. I, okay, I'm going to make a motion for staff to bring back some ideas, some tools that we could do instead of a performance evaluation with regards to the CAO. I don't want to use the word "performance." Review. I can review. Review is reviewing. And Counselor Toth has seconded my motion?
I was seconding it, but that's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted a question.
No, that was my handoff. I just sang.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion on this? All right, last chance, Counselor Shepherd. All in favor? And opposed? And so moved. Any other conversation to be had? Okay.
Sorry, again, to be jumping around in the document, I, I'm now jumping back to three E on the first page of Director Roberts. The mayor and councils were asked to endorse commitments by the mayor, appendix D. This is not being completed. I, I'm actually in support of endorsing that. However, I, I've got a, a problem with item five of Schedule D, which is a reference to the weekly meeting with the CAO. And I, I'm, I'm going to have more to talk about this later in closed session, but I'm in support of council endorsing everything except for item five. Correct. I'm in favor of endorsing E with the exception of item five.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm seconding it to put it on the table for discussion, but I don't think I can support it at this time because I don't know, I don't think that it's something, looking at the items in, in appendix D on page three-ten of the, the agenda package, I'm not sure that it's something that we as council can endorse. It is specifically commitments by the mayor. And I, you know, these are commitments that the mayor needs to endorse or not. And I think we can support that, but I don't think we as a council can endorse these things.
That was going to be my comment. I agree. Counselor Shepherd?
Then can we look to, to the com, to the mayor for comment on this, on my motion? Thanks.
Mayor Henderson, comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. You know, throughout this process, I have tried to accommodate council, tried to accommodate the CUF report. I've abided by the various restrictions placed on me for communications, agenda setting, and the like. This has been going on now for well over a year. And I feel what we've heard today, some of the comments earlier, are things that, well, I categorically reject. And I don't think there's any, I have any position to take on anything today. This has been an ambush, and I'm prepared to participate in it. I will continue to serve the district to the best of my abilities, but this, this approach is, where several of you many times have said you're jumping all over, you're bouncing around. That's because this has been so poorly handled. Allegations about things that need to be addressed enclosed, but are now being addressed in public. This is unprofessional and unacceptable.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the table. And the motion is to endorse commitments by the mayor minus number five. All those in favor? Opposed? And that is defeated. Counselor Toth?
Thank you, Chair. I might as well jump in on one here. Looking at four A and four B, which talks about the Governance and Priorities Committee model, I don't think with what we've got going on and where we're headed in the next few months, I don't think it'd be appropriate for us to change our, our committee and our meeting structure. So I'd actually like to make a recommendation to refer this to the next council for consideration, like the next term for consideration.
Seconded by Counselor Shepherd. Any discussion on that?
I think the committee of the whole approach we've been taking, from my, from my experience, has been quite awkward and not, not that fluid and not that rational in terms of some of the main issues we've had to deal with. We could have had specific meetings that address specific issues, and we could have gotten into them. You know, it's not just about development, although we've had a lot of planning, housing development policy come our way. We probably should have had a few sessions on that. It just came like a tsunami. But these are really important issues to discuss. And I just fear that, you know, we will not get the opportunity to show the public that we are concerned about these issues, and we do want to talk about them, and we all have opinions. But we just end up, you know, lying along with whatever is topical for certain people, I guess. And, and I feel like my role as a counselor has been, you know, belittled, really. Because I haven't had those opportunities to actually discuss things, except as the fires come up. You know, we've had a lot of fires. And so I, you know, I can understand how you feel. You know, we don't have that many months left with this council. And it's hard to change if everybody's not gung ho. So it's just my two bits worth. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead. Counselor Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Last term, at the start of last term, part of the move to committee of the whole was to allow for more rapid response. Like when it was, you know, a monthly meeting for planning, and, you know, staff were scrambling to try and meet those, those agenda deadlines. And, you know, if you miss that deadline, well, it's a whole nother month down the road. You know, we can, we as a council could still decide that we want to take time within our committee of the whole meetings to carve out some space for discussion topics, especially when, you know, staff propose that we, we cancel a meeting because there's no items for the agenda. Well, that's an opportunity for any one of us to pipe up and go, well, actually, can, can we have a discussion on X, Y, or Z? And it's, that's something that we've been talking about at the regional district as well, is trying to sort of utilize one of those committees of the whole to do more of the routine business, and one of them to do more of the, the strategic business of the board. And there's really no reason we couldn't shape that with the committee of the whole structure we have now. In, in reading through CUF's recommendations of the, the Governance and Priorities Committee, you know, even, even to look at, I think it's the city in Anaymo that has one of these, a lot of the things that they talk about in Governance Priorities Committee are, are things that we talk about or could be talking about more at our existing committee of the whole. So, you know, it's pretty, pretty typical for a, a new incoming council to discuss how they want to arrange their, their meetings and, and set things up. And I think, you know, with a year to go, I don't think now is the time for us to be sort of overturning the table on our committees and, and trying to rebuild them, when the next council may, may change their mind entirely and scrap them. So, thanks.
Okay. So the motion is to basically defer this to next term, next council term. Did we have a seconder for that? We did, yep. Okay. All in favor? And opposed? Thank you.
No, I mean, I, I'd actually vote to defer for C, D, and G as well, defer them all to, sorry. C and D as well to the next council. Again, it's the same argument, I think.
All right, seconded by Counselor Toth to defer C and D. Or C and D. Any discussion on that? All in favor? And, and opposed? Counselor Toth?
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if council would be supportive of basically referring the ones we haven't dealt with to an October committee of the whole meeting, so we get sort of an updated list and an updated opportunity to go through what's left and see how we want to address them. Because I think it was pointed out, we don't have to deal with all of it today. And I think we've, you know, gone through a lot of the list. So I'd be willing to refer this, the remaining items, to an October committee of the whole.
Seconded by Counselor Inkster. Any other comments? All right, all in favor? So moved. Opposed? Counselor Inkster?
Just a, a question of staff, and I guess I can't totally recall because we've been going through, CUF report came in June 2024 through you, Chair. And how many times has it come back to council? I know, I know.
I will do my best with the question through the chair. So we reviewed the CUF report when it came to us, and then we did an implementation plan, I believe, in September. And then that had a list of dates that were attached to each recommendation that we were moving forward with. And then we provided an update at the end of July 2025, and then here again. So the original time that CUF came and presented it to us, and then September, July, and today. So today is the fourth.
Oh, sorry, didn't have, we've adjourned. Didn't have my mic on. Public, anybody have any questions for us? No online attendees, okay. Right, thank you. I'm going to ask for four minutes to visit the ladies' room.